I think I like this pretty paper.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 21, 2023 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti.
Tom Turente.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack DeMergen, zoning administrator.
All right, good. I have no reason to believe that Paul Kaplan won't be with us tonight. He's just not here yet, but I'm sure he'll be here. All right, first item on our agenda is a review of the minutes from the March 7, 2023 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look those over?
I just had one question on page three, second paragraph, that Mr. K. also questioned the mentality of the town of Orange. Is that what we're trying to communicate? Wouldn't it be reasoning? A mentality just...
Yeah, I think that's more accurate as well.
Yeah, definitely. I had a comment on the last paragraph on page two. The commission members reviewed the presented language of the Orange zoning regulations, allowing one cannabis establishment to be permitted in town. I think it should say allowing no more than one cannabis establishment. That was what the whole idea was. And I have one other comment, second to last paragraph on page three. In the second line, it says, "Orange zoning regulations to limit to one," the number. Okay, just insert the words "to," "one," the number of cannabis establishments. And then I would say, take out the word "per" and put in, allowed in. You got that? All right, that's all I had. Tom, anything? Judy? You're all set. All right, then, somebody prepare to move that we approve the minutes as amended?
I will make a motion to approve the March 7 minutes as amended.
We have a motion. A second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next item on our agenda is old business, and noted on our agenda is ground-mounted solar panel language review. This is Section 383-26, subsection I, that deals with accessory uses, and specifically subsection two there.
I'm sorry, Paul.
Hey, we just got started. I knew you'd be along quickly enough. How you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good, good. All right, so did everybody get a final look at this? I had a, I'm sorry to say.
No.
I had a few little...
That's why we're here.
...nitpicking to do. I can give you my changes, but I think substantively it accomplishes...
Right, I know last time we were trying to figure out what the best way is to encompass, you know, the areas that we wanted covered here. And that highlighted area on page three is what we're looking at. So if anyone has comments, I'm all ears.
All right, on page two, subsection two, I two, the line begins household pets. And after the word "pets," I'd put a comma.
I'm sorry, we're at page...
Over here.
Oh, okay, yep.
I'd put a comma and delete the word "and." And then at the end of that line, after "personal goods," comma, I would put in the word "and." And then in the next line, at the end of the line, it says, "and buildings," and I would take out the word "and," and on the next line, the word "structures." For such uses, comma, and then I would take out the word "and" and put in the words "but I think it reads better that way. So it'll say, "household pets, storage facilities for personal goods, and solar and other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation structures and buildings for such uses, but only when such uses are for the personal and family use of the occupants of the dwelling in their guest."
Got it. Yep.
Other than that, I'd be prepared to... Let me make sure I didn't have another change. All right, and on the next page, three, second line, it says, "in front of the primary structure," or I would add the word "in," or "in any area between a street."
Would take care of the corner issue?
Right.
I think that was our intention.
Right, any area between a street line, so that's kind of how we weaseled it down. But if anybody has any comments or can think of any other language to add, if we have an odd-shaped lot or anything.
We beat this deadline.
Yeah, and we also still have opportunities to amend it. This is just before I send it out to everyone, so we can still tinker with it.
Yeah. All right, I maybe could have saved my changes to them, but...
The closer we get it now, the less we'll have...
I think it reads a little better that way.
I agree.
All right. So we don't need to do anything else with that at this point? You're gonna...
Nope, I can start sending those out, and then we should expect this language on an agenda in about a month.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right. Item three on our agenda is new business, and one of the things we want to talk about is the 79-89 Boston Post Road lot split.
Yes, so what we have here is a proposed lot split that I put before the commission because our regulations do outline, it is the determination of the commission for subdivision or re-subdivision, and make the determination of whether or not an application is needed. Based on our regulations, a subdivision is a split creating three or more parcels, which we do not have here. And everyone did receive a memo from the engineering firm that kind of outlines what they're doing here. And I know they're also in the crowd tonight, so perhaps they could come up here and kind of give us some details and answer any questions we might have.
Yeah, fine, that'd be helpful.
You know, if you want, if you could come to the podium, and you could put that right on the windowsill, it usually works best for us.
Good evening, my name is Marcus Puddock. For the record, I'm an engineer at Godfrey Hoffman Hodge, 26 Broadway in North Haven. We are proposing a lot split of a parcel on Boston Post Road. It's existing, improved, it's been improved for many, many years. There are no physical changes proposed to the lot. It's just a split of one of the buildings and the required parking for that building from the others so that it may be sold to the owner of that business that's currently located there.
The buildings are both in existence?
Yeah, oh, there are three buildings on the lot, and all three are in existence.
What is...
This is the Taco Bell.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, I didn't even notice. Okay, fine. So as it stands right now, there are three buildings on this one lot?
On one continuous piece, yep.
Yep.
And if the subdivision is approved...
Lot split.
Yeah, it's a free lot split.
The lot split, yeah, well, that's a good point, the lot split.
Because we're not creating more than three lots here.
Right.
It wouldn't meet our subdivision definition.
Well, you know, that was my only question about this. I mean, is this the first cut?
It is the first cut, yes.
That's established, how?
The lot has been in existence in the same form. We have the deeds, we certainly can submit that to the administrator, your administrator. It has been in this configuration since before your subdivision and zoning regulations were created.
I mean, if that's the case, my understanding is that, you know, we don't need, it's not an application for subdivision approval, and we don't need to...
But when you split the lot, you can't create a zoning non-conformity, right?
No.
Exactly.
But all I'm saying is a question of who gives them the answer to that question. I think it comes to us if it's an application for subdivision approval. I think it goes to the zoning enforcement officer for a certificate of zoning compliance if he determines that the both properties, you know, the two properties created, both comply fully with the zoning regulations.
Correct. It goes to the commission to make the determination of, is this a subdivision, a re-subdivision? If the commission makes the determination that it is not, and it's not subject to a subdivision application, then we basically are just checking for conformity, making sure this lot split is not creating any issues with what exists today. It does still need to be endorsed by the chairman of the zoning commission, so before, if the applicant, you know, were to not have any issues here, before it is filed on the land records in the town clerk's office, Mr. Chairman, you would have to still endorse it and give your signature on the plan.
But the sign-off comes from you as the zoning enforcement?
Right, there's really no sign-off to be had, because, again, it's not subject to a formal application, if the commission were to make that determination.
Once the determination is made that these do not render themselves by the split non-conforming?
Correct. So right now...
And the split is allowed without subdivision approval because it's the first cut?
Yep.
So as long as the commission still feel, or feels as though this does not meet our subdivision requirements by definition, which it doesn't, we're basically checking it for conformity, making sure parking is there, you know, making sure they're not creating any setback issues with this property line that they're adding.
So we're looking at the zoning enforcement officer, where is he? Oh, yeah. Are there any non-conformities if they do the lot split?
I know we had a couple of questions on parking. I had one or two, one being for dumpsters, for trash pickup. One was not being shown on the parcel being created, at least that I can see. So I just wanted to confirm, are you having separate trash facilities for this business? And if so, where would they be going?
I'll defer to the landowner who could answer that.
Yeah, you should come up.
Good evening, I'm David Kennedy. I'm one of the partners of RNA Realty, which is one of the owners of 79 to 89 Boston Post Road. To answer that question, as far as I know, the existing business, Sponge Brothers, has their dumpsters on the back of the building, and I think that's exactly where they'll leave them, so...
With regard to the new lot, or is that the old lot?
This is the new lot. So this parcel has been owned and operated and maintained for over 50-odd years by RNA Realty, never been subdivided. The reason we're in here tonight is we're seeking a lot divide in order to sell this one lot to the existing owner-operator, Adam Sheps of Sponge Brothers.
So this isn't preliminary to site plan approval, that you're gonna, you're not looking to change any...
No, we haven't done any modifications, any repairs, and there's...
If you were gonna be doing that, then it would be subject to site plan approval.
Correct, if something were, if they were proposing any change.
But there's no changes, it's just a cut.
And as far as I know, there's no change from the potential buyers.
Well, that'd be up to him.
To them, correct.
Yes, exactly. So where, so there's a loading zone in, behind that building, is essentially where the dumpsters are now.
Are they shown on the map? Do you see them on the map, or is that...
The loading zone is showing, it might be on the second...
They are not shown.
It's not, yeah.
And we typically wouldn't locate something like that on a survey because it's movable. So it's like a car, you wouldn't locate a car sitting there.
So in the plan that you drew, the parking and less, you know, I can't add, you're showing 18 spaces on lot two, you've got 16 shown in the chart. You've got 118. Your total's right, but you've got two that you need over on the larger lot on the small lot you're creating. Can you put a couple of spaces up on the upper left-hand side there someplace, or stripe them?
Kevin, lot two, you're saying shows...
Lot two is striped for 18 spaces. In the chart, it says 16.
Right.
Okay. But lot one is calling for 161 spaces, and there's 159 striped, if you add them up. So to make it conforming, you may have to stripe a couple lot, you know, before Jack signs off on it.
So is this the area you're talking about to add?
Yeah.
So right now, this is currently level grass area.
Okay.
So, but there's a lot of area back here, and there's...
I'm just trying, I don't want you to...
Did you count these two handicap spaces? I think that, there's no number for them.
In the back?
In the back. I think that's where they're missing spaces.
Do you see them?
Okay, these two back here?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are definitely spaces in striped currently.
Okay, good. Then you've got that 161.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm not looking for...
No, I was, I'm like, wait a second. I'm pretty sure, I checked this, you know. But, yeah, if we were wrong, it happens, but, okay, that's, those are the two.
All right, that's it. Sorry, what else did you have, Jack?
I did have one other question. I know a lot of these spaces in back are not currently striped. Is that something that in the future we're planning on doing? Because obviously, we're showing them as striped here, but I know it's existing blacktop, but they're not actually striped today.
So I assume this is the row you're talking about?
Right.
Yes, I could strike those, we could get that done.
Are they utilized?
No, never. There's never a need for them, but we'd be happy to stripe them. And the building is fully occupied, so, but they're, right now, they...
Nobody goes back there.
They haven't, yeah.
Just thinking towards parking requirement numbers, obviously, having them striped allows us to kind of count them a little better.
Sure, for compliance purposes.
Exactly.
They were shown for, you know...
Right. I mean, it's already paved, you definitely have the space here, you know.
That's really what it is, Joe.
What's the procedure for getting the, doesn't the tax, doesn't the tax assessor look at the plan as well?
For the split itself?
Yeah.
They would look at it, and basically, the new deed that would be rewritten would go to the assessor as well, and he would handle whatever tax changes it is, but it doesn't require his approval.
He doesn't have to sign off on the...
Correct, it doesn't require his go-ahead.
No, but he asked it to sign a lot to it so they can...
Oh, yes, yeah. Once this is filed on the land records, he'll get the notification and make any changes that he needs.
All right, so that's the procedure, I mean, it's not...
Correct, yeah.
Excuse me, I think now, currently, even though it's not legally subdivided, I think we get three separate tax bills for each building.
I know you do for Taco Bell, because we do have a separate, similar to Key Bank in the plaza where Cold Stone is, we did it maybe about a year ago now. It was one continuous piece, but they had a, like a tax line on it, where they were separately taxed, and I think it's the same thing for this Taco Bell here, and if the car wash is as well.
Either way... That's the way it's gonna wind up, is gonna be three separate...
That's the way it will wind up, yes, as a separate lot that gets taxed separately. Yep. And that happens after, after the filing.
Right. And the other thing you'd look for on a split like this would be access, and there's nothing changing on it, in access to utilities.
They have two driveways, they have, we gave easements, cross-easements for all of the utilities that are in common or cross or nearly cross lines.
I think when Taco Bell came in about 15 years ago, that we went through that, and they made sure that there was sufficient access, curb cuts, to go through, to keep the traffic off the Boston Post Road, right?
Interconnections, yep.
But, you know, you obviously have water directly to the site.
Yep.
And it's sanitary.
Just a second. The sanitary runs from the building down through to the manhole out.
Right, so that's...
And there's an easement across, shown.
So is there gonna be any change in ownership?
Yes, the new, this parcel will end up owned by...
All right, so then...
That's what they're trying to accomplish.
The gentleman that owns this business.
Yeah, no, I know.
By Sponge Brothers.
Yep. So when you do that, we would like there to be interconnection between those two parcels.
There isn't for that, there's a curb.
Yeah.
Down the common ground.
There's a curb the whole way? There's no break?
There is a break, but it's at the back.
Yeah.
The thing is, it's not a site plan.
Yeah.
So we can't impose that.
Yeah.
Right, they're not making any changes, so if the new owner is properly wanted to, they would have to come in.
If the new owner was gonna make any site improvements, that would be a good point in time to raise that issue, exactly. Okay, any other questions? So we're not voting on this?
No, because there's no application, as long as it's the consensus of the commission that this does not constitute a subdivision or re-subdivision, which by our regulations, it does not.
It's not something that would require some, an application for subdivision approval.
Correct, but again, it would require your endorsement on the new map that will be filed in the town clerk's office, which I can work with, you know, the potential applicant on, and we can coordinate when to come in and sign that.
Can I just ask one thing? Under the zoning analysis table, minimum frontage for lot two, you have 167. Should that be 127? What's I'm reading the map on?
Yes, you are correct.
All right, that's a very good, okay. That was the only thing I picked up on, but...
But that's still the required frontage, right?
Right, they're only required to have 50.
Well, it exceeds, yeah, it only has to be 50, but I just thought we'd correct that.
Yep, well, we absolutely should.
All right, anything else for these gentlemen?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we don't need anything further on that then, right?
Nope. I will work with them and you to get what we need done.
We talked about the ground-mounted solar panels under old business. Was there, I skipped out of there quickly. Was there anything else under old business that we wanted to talk about? No? Okay. How about anything else under new business? All right, then, item four, Jack is a reporter of the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, I don't have much. Everyone got additional pages. When I handed out the new regulations at the last meeting, Commissioner Kaplan was kind enough to point out that there was about 10 to 15 pages missing in the middle. So everyone got those missing pages, so they can include those in their new regs. Other than that, I don't have too much. If anyone has anything for me?
Any update on the project that, on Orange, on, oh my God, what? No, not, well, not Indian River, I was asking, yeah, Old Tavern.
Pedal to the metal over there, they're definitely, yeah, they're moving quick. Not too much, I know, like I said, they're hauling over there, but they're, I think they're trying to get ready for spring and summer to start renting those out. I haven't had any issues with them. I know they're working with building and fire, as well as the one on Smith Farm.
Right.
They're also pedal to the metal over there, too. Yep. But again, no issues with either, no complaints.
Okay.
Yes, yours are included, yep.
All right. Is that it, Jack?
Yep, I think so.
All right, then, the last item on the agenda is a bond release... All right, then, the last item on the agenda is a bond release request for 205 Edison Road.
Yes, so this was Aurora Products, if everyone remembers, they did an addition onto their existing building. They had some site work included as well that has been completed. I did two inspections of the property, making sure they were all there, they've submitted the as-bills that we need, and I confirmed with the rest of the department heads if they needed anything else. They said that they were all set, I think they're just finishing up some electrical stuff with the building department, but other than that, they're pretty much done over there.
So they're requesting a release of the entire bond?
They are requesting their full bond back, both the insurance bond and the cash bond, correct.
Cash is $30,000, surety is $619,000.
Correct.
And there's no reason to hold any of that back?
No, based on my inspections, they've paved everything, their detention pond is completed, striping is done.
Landscaping?
Landscaping completed, there was very minimal landscaping on this project, so I didn't have any reason to hold anything over from them.
Okay.
And I know if any landscaping doesn't take, they'll be putting it in, they'll be making their landscaper come back. There is a note in their plans as well that outlines, if anything dies within 12 months, the applicant, you know, whoever does their landscaping, is required to come back and fix that. So even if we don't have the bond for that, that is included in their approval, so I'm comfortable returning the bond.
You looking for a motion? We need a motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we move that we return the bond currently being held with regard to the Aurora property at 205 Edison Road, back to the applicant, the bonds being the $30,000 cash bond, as well as the performance bond, number 12026596.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it. All right, pretty simple night tonight, huh?
Thank you, everyone.
Move to adjourn?
Please do.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Good job.
We have a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All done at 7:30, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.